The school board meeting for Putnam County School District is officially called to order for Tuesday, May the 21st, 2019. At this time, we will have our pledge of allegiance and we're going to invite our group to come on in. They are going to sign the pledge for us while Attorney Douglas will lead us.
Does he know how it starts?
And then following that, we will have our invocation from my pastor Reverend Mary Alice Murphy.
Look at all these kids. What I'm talking about.
Can we introduce real quick?
Yes ma'am, you may. Are we ready? Okay. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
The tissue paper right there.
Let us bow our heads for the invocation. Thank you God. You are indeed the giver of all gifts. We thank you today for your blessings, for the successful outcome of our school events, for the success rate of high school graduates. We pray for their future endeavors. Thank you for leadership, our school superintendent, leading the district. A job well done. Thank you God for our school board members, teachers and support members. God, we ask your blessings upon them abundantly, far and beyond, to continue making a difference in the lives of our children and the district. We pray for provisions. You are God to provide. Take a bite out of hunger, nurture and restore health. Thank you God. We pray for wisdom, guidance, courage and strength. Be with us God in our deliberation. Help us be wise in all decision-making for the good of all who have placed their trust and confidence in Putnam County School District. Continue God to give us insight, to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and what is good, and that our children and the district will be successful and productive, no child left behind. God, please grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say, let your will be done. All glory will be given to you loving God, nigh and always. Please bless this meeting today and all those who are present, as well as the lives of those who we'll encounter afterwards. Make every moment count. This we pray in Jesus's name and we all say amen. Amen. Thank you Pastor. At this time, we're ready for our presentations. Our first one will be "The Lamp of Learning: Fifth Grade Awards by ADK Educational Sorority", presented by Mrs. Gail Cahann. And others.
She would be Larry and Jeff's mom.
ADK is an international honorary organization for women educators that provide a wealth of opportunities for leadership development and networking through workshops, training sessions, conferences and conventions. In the past two years alone, Alpha Delta Kappa members have given nearly $12 million in monetary and other gifts, nearly $2 million in scholarships and have provided more than 2 million hours of volunteer service to their communities. It is our distinct pleasure to continue this trend here in Putnam County, awarding the top fifth grader at each elementary school with a monetary reward of $50 to recognize their academic and educational accomplishments. These students were chosen by their teachers for being great, all-around student leaders, both academically and socially. The criteria for this achievement were that students excel academically, behaves well in class, exhibits a positive attitude, helps his or her classmates and participates in extracurricular, school, community or church activities. Now we'll have our chapter president call our names for our recipients.
From the Children's Reading Center, we have Navea Williams.
Better just stay up here?
I think that's what we normally do.
Yeah, just have them come right on around the dials.
From Middleton Bernie Elementary School, Tegan Smith. From Melrose Elementary School, Braylon Zurich, who is in Washington DC today on a patrol field trip. Kelly Smith Paisley Wisham. Browning Pierce, Alexia Chain.
You better get more Kleenex for Ms. Crawford.
Mosley Elementary School, Darian Appeling. James A. Long, Karen Drew. E. H. Miller, Aiden Taylor. Interlockin Elementary, Asiel Lopez Sero. Mellon Elementary, Jacqueline Butler. I'm sorry, that's Jacelyn. And Aquila Elementary School, Kimora Dummer. And those are our top fifth graders as chosen by their teachers and their principals.
Chair, you want to say it?
ADK needs to get with them too.
Karen Hughes tell me she runs the thing anyways.
Karen, you need to be up front.
Hey, she does.
I like to aggravate Karen. Larry Cahann would like this. He's my boy.
It's the newspaper man.
One, two, three. Thank you all.
Thank you ADK.
See, I told you.
Yeah, really.
I told you Karen was in charge.
And to the ladies of ADK, truly we thank you for your investment in our children and parents, we thank you for sending us these fine young men and young ladies that have excelled in their classrooms, not just academically but socially, and we appreciate that. Thank you again. Let's give them another hand. At this time, we will have recognition of Interlockin High School Weight Lifter qualifying for state championship. All those weightlifters and the coaches, if you will please come forward from Interlockin High first.
Are they here?
I don't think they're here.
Daryl, you want to come up and be a weightlifter?
Okay. All right, maybe they'll come in later and we'll certainly recognize them. We'll move on to recognition of Palatka High School Track Team Members Qualifying for State Championship. Coach Williams is listed here, but I see Coach Jeremy here. So if you will come on Coach Passmore. And what does Macaroni have?
I want you to look at that Calvin Klein shirt.
He's a mogul on the side.
Yeah, I know he can run. I've watched him.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm here to recognize, I'm Coach Passmore, the head coach for the Palatka High School Track and Field Teams, and I'm here to recognize a couple of young men and young women that accomplished some huge goals this season. A number of them are not here today because of a couple of different reasons, car issues, whatever it may be, but we do have two outstanding individuals. We have Emmanuel Robinson. He is the district champ, state, I mean district champ in the shot put and the conference champ in the shot put as well, and he qualified for state, placing I think 13th overall in the shot put. And we have, I'm pretty sure most of you already know, Trevon Williams, AKA Macaroni. He's been running and been shining for a long time now and he placed fourth or fifth in the 200 meter dash and he was able to bring home gold in the 400 meter dash with a state, a school record of 47.6, which is going to be hard for some people to come and bring down this year so.
Now didn't Coach Polite have that standing record before he got it?
Uh, no.
Ah, just, I'm messing with you.
I would also like to recognize my coaches, but they're not here today. Coach Jarvis Melton Senior, Coach Ulysses Tobler and Coach Kendrick Wright as well and my Coach Wilkerson over there, who's retiring as well. So, job well done for these young men.
Thank y'all for coming.
Oh, Saturday.
I'm gonna get next to my cousins.
You couldn't split yourself enough ways to get next to all your cousins?
You might be in another picture today anyway.
I'm surprised he doesn't have his fishing pole.
Alright, everyone a little bit sway. One, two, three.
One, two, three. Get one more in the back.
Proud mama.
Yeah.
And again, we do congratulate the track team and their accomplishments this season and I would be remiss if I did not mention that Macaroni got his skills from me, we are cousins, his mom and I are second cousins, so I think that bloodline must be. At this time, we will have our recognition of Palatka High School Weightlifters that
Good afternoon, everybody. I just want to thank the school board for inviting us up here and recognizing these guys. This team, these five guys are part of the team that were the county, district and regional champions this year for boys weightlifting. I'll start with this young man. This is Ontario Reed, goes by OT. He is the county, district and regional champion and the third ranked weightlifter in the state Drevon Wallace, also a district, district champion correct, runner-up. District runner-up, regional runner-up, and he was the 18th ranked weightlifter in the state this year in his weight class. This is Desmond Dallas. He was also the county and district champ, regional runner-up and ranked 13th at the state weightlifting meet. Sorry, I gotta keep asking. This is Tavel Adams, also the county and district champion, regional runner-up. He placed, he placed 13th also at state in his weight class. This is Daryl Polite Junior, his dad's sitting right there so he gets it honest. He is the county, district and regional champion and was also, I'm sorry, he was 14th at the state weightlifting meet. And all five of these guys scored enough points, we are now ranked the 20th team in the state of Florida in 1A in weightlifting. Again, I say, thank y'all for letting us come up here and recognize the boys.
Are they all underclassmen?
Tavel and Desmond are the only ones that are graduates.
Hang on because we're going to get a picture with the superintendent and the board chair. And while you're here, all you coaches, Coach Passmore and you, you don't, you don't, I think you do realize what an impact you have on our children. You know, sometimes it only takes one wanting to run track to keep them from either wanting to be at school and follow the rules and learn, or wanting to be somewhere else. And I can't say enough, thank yous for what you do.
That's two former Putnam County graduates that come back.
Yes sir.
Absolutely.
Coaches, y'all come on in.
Yes sir.
Come on in. Congratulations.
You need to thank your dad too.
Oh yeah, sorry, this is also, this is my dad. He was one of my assistant coaches. I just want to thank him for being here and for me also.
There's a lot of cute up there.
We got a lot of cameras. One, two, three. Stay with it.
Holding, holding.
Miss Gilliard gonna have a sunburn from all those flashbulbs.
Good job guys.
And Coach Whitlock, am I correct in what I read in the Palatka Daily News? If not, you blame them, that you have decided to stay in Putnam County. You turned pro county down. Yes, alright. So we'll have him back for next year because initially he had gotten a job and accepted, but when you drink the water from Putnam County, it's hard, it's hard to let us go. Thank you Coach.
Come on now, we have treated water in our schools, they're so good.
Okay, at this time, we will have recognition of March of Dimes coordinators and following that, the recognition of the retiring administrators by our superintendent.
Thank you Madam Chair, and I'm going to call Tammy from the March of Dimes office to come up here and assist me today. Yeah.
Baby, did you take my pen?
Yeah, and I'm going to read a little bit and I want Tammy to kind of chime in. She's got some additional information, but just to tell you, the impact not only Putnam County, but all of our schools had on raising funds for the March of Dimes this year has been phenomenal and I think it's deserving of recognition of those people who have led the charge at each of our schools and at our departments here in Putnam County. Let me just mention a couple of things and Tammy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The school district, first of all, countywide, we had a goal of $77,000 this year as a goal, the entire county, and as of right now, and I think the total's continuing to climb, but as of today, it's right at 65,000. So there's more money coming in. Of that figure, of that figure, about 24,000 has been raised by Putnam County School District alone. So that's phenomenal.
Yes.
Very good. Our top three schools or top three sites that have raised money, I don't have those figures, but that's been Aquila, Aquila Elementary, Interlockin Elementary and Browning Pierce Elementary, were the three top moneymakers. And I just want to commend our local Campbell Building, no, excuse me, not Campbell Building, sorry. District Office, it's a slip of the tongue, sorry. Our District Office team was really active and they came out of the gates raising money, I mean at the beginning of the year, including Jonathan Hinky and I got a pie in the face.
That was hilarious.
Anyway, I guess we drew the short straw or something, but it was all part of the fun and, but we really enjoyed it. We had a number of activities, drawings and, you know, cake auctions and you name it, there was something every week it seemed like, but it was for a good cause. But Tammy, come up and talk to us about the overall fundraiser and then we're going to call up each representative after that.
Wonderful, well it's hard to beat that, hard to beat the weightlifting and those other competitions, but I'm going to try, but I will echo one thing that just warms my heart every year. Your community, the way you come together, not just the school, but the community in general is truly remarkable. I cover about nine walks throughout our state and I said it before, I shouldn't say it, but this is one of my favorite communities to visit because of the passion, but also as far as schools go, I have to just say, the one thing you are doing that is really unlike any other, you are really teaching young people that they are bigger than themselves. When you teach them about service learning and giving back to the community, there is nothing a textbook can teach about that, but it comes here with leadership and it comes with passion from the community and the board. So I just have to start off by saying how grateful I am to be among the such passionate community like yours. I will add, the numbers keep coming in, I want to shout, is anyone from Middleton Bernie here? So Middleton Bernie, I think, we may have a little tiebreaker perhaps, maybe you bumped another one out there, but we don't have the exact numbers in, but this is my little statement, that we are not done yet. We, as an organization, our mission is to lead the fight for the health of all moms and all babies. We don't stop when the school year ends, and I know a lot of you don't either. So that is my gentle way Felicia knows this, we're still challenging, you still have another week of school left. So Middleton Bernie is already squeaking into that third place position, so the rest of you hearing this right now, you're not done yet, we won't stop and I know you won't either. So I'm just going to stand back now and really applaud the rest of the efforts here as we give out some, I think some certificates, correct?
Yeah, very good.
And then I have one final announcement to end, but I'll do that to end.
Thank you. And if you could help me hand these out, and as I call your school out, if you just line up here and I'll ask Tammy to hand you your certificate, and each certificate says, "We did it thanks to your fundraising efforts, the Putnam County School District raised over $20,000, actually a lot more than that during 2018-19 school year. These funds expand programs and educate medical professionals to make sure that moms and babies get the best possible care. You fund research to find solutions to the biggest health threats. You support moms throughout every stage of the pregnancy journey, even when everything doesn't go according to plan." Presented May 21st, 2019, and that's signed by myself and our board chairman. And we're going to start off with Interlockin Elementary School. And then Melrose Elementary School. Aquila Elementary School. Kelly Smith Elementary School. Mosley Elementary School. James A. Long Elementary School. Mellon Elementary School. Browning Pierce Elementary School. Middleton Bernie Elementary School. CL Overturf Sixth Grade Center. I don't believe anyone's here for them. Miller Middle School. E. H. Miller School. QI Roberts Junior/Senior High School. Crescent City High School.
Bev, I've always liked to say a few words in front of everybody.
School Board Administration Office. And our Exceptional Student Education Department. And before we take a picture, Tammy, you want to come out and say a few more things before we take?
Can you hear me if I just use my voice out here? Okay, I like being out front and center in front of this amazing crowd. So as you all know, it takes a village to accomplish what we do, but it also goes back to volunteer leadership. We are a volunteer-led organization, began back in the 30s trying to conquer polio, which we did, and we need that volunteer chair to lead the charge each year. And I'm very pleased to announce, I got permission to say this tonight, we have our chair for 2020 and it is no other than Superintendent Rick Cerzynski.
I did it for 12 years. Raised over a million dollars. Yeah, me and Charlie.
If they double down anymore.
Bev, you need to come, you need to come out in the daytime more often. Hey Jackie.
What a great town to have, this many people up here, right?
Charlie, Jonathan Pounds told me he learned more doing that job than anything he ever did. I didn't have to worry about anything had you doing it all.
Sandy's got one in the back. Get Sandy.
I forgot what I was for.
One more.
Alright, everyone this way, one, two, three.
Thank you guys.
You know Mr. Cerzynski, one year we had the national fundraising winner from Putnam County School, Luke Parish.
Luke Parish, right, I remember that. You know what he's doing now?
Architecture.
He's an engineer, GP.
Engineer, that's fair.
Wow.
He will be great.
Mr. Buckles actually reminded me of one of our former students, who was actually the national poster child for the March of Dimes several years ago, and just to let you know what this program has meant to him, he has actually graduated from Palatka High School, went on to Virginia Tech and has become an engineer, and now he works locally at Georgia Pacific as an engineer, but he was a March of Dimes poster child.
National winner.
National winner.
And call his name, you never did call his name.
Luke Parish, if you know, remember Luke Parish. A lot to be proud of. I'm going to ask three of our administrators. I'm going to ask three of our administrators to come up front and then I'll start talking about them. And that is Evelyn Langston, Jerome Wilkerson, and Deborah Shepherd. If you would, just come up to the center.
Getting me with her Hershey's Kisses.
I want to say a few things and if anybody else has anything they want to add, board, we're happy to do it, but this is a special time for these three individuals who have given most of their life, if not more, to the Putnam County School District, and we are so proud of their service and we wish them the best. They are retiring from the Putnam County School District. And I'll start off with Evelyn Langston, right here in the middle, has given 37 years to the Putnam County School District. Actually, this is her second time. She actually retired first, she did not do a good job at that. She failed at retirement, so she thinks she's got it down now, I think, but-
She can't make biscuits like her mother did.
But Evelyn came back and really filled a need for the district, what, 15 or 6, 2015, 16, I forget what year. What year did you come back?
15, 16.
Okay, 15, 16. Came back and was one of our principals at a time where we needed someone with valuable experience like hers, so she came back and was willing to do that and we certainly appreciate it, and she's made such an impact at Ocwell Elementary. And proud of that time, I know she was a principal, exceptional student education director, so she's done a lot of things in Putnam County, as well as taught, you know, most of us start off teaching, but Evelyn, you're going to be sorely missed, but you've trained someone to step in and take over and, you know, Ocwell is in good hands thanks to you, so. Also want to talk about Jerome Wilkerson right here. Jerome has 36 years with the district and Jerome has a number of assignments over the years. I know he was an elementary school PE teacher, he coached baseball a number of years, coached football.
Played baseball at Placa High.
And spent a number of years at Placa High, he has shaped many young men over the years, including my son. And I can't thank him enough for just the role model he's been for many of our youth here in Putnam County. But finishing out at Placa High School as Assistant Principal, I tell you, he knows every inch of that school and, you know, that school runs because Jerome Wilkerson has been there to make sure everything's okay, so he's going to be sorely missed. And we actually had a little retirement get together for him a week or two ago and we all got to tell stories on him. Not sure how many of them are true, but kind of the theme of all the stories, it focused around fish.
Yep.
You know, catching fish, cooking fish, whatever, but I think one of y'all said it's surprising he didn't bring a fishing pole in here today. Yeah, Jane said that. So Jerome, we appreciate you and the impact you've had on our young people. And finally, we want to recognize Deborah Shepherd, 35 years, right here at the district office. Of course, she's been in schools, actually, when I came to Putnam County back in the mid 80s, Deborah and I worked together at Beasley Middle School, worked in the dean's office. So we both survived that and went on to different things, but Deborah, most recently, has spent time here in charge of our retirement program and our risk management. See Steve back there from Nefec, he's also retiring, and he and Deborah have really worked closely together over the last several years on risk management. But many, many people who've retired over the last several years have gotten to know Deborah very closely, including myself. When I retired, it's always good to know you can meet with her and she can make you feel better about retirement because it's a pretty scary thing. So hopefully, you're not going to be too scared about it since you've helped so many people.
Anybody's helping.
She is ready.
But all three of these individuals are going to leave a big gap in the Putnam County School District. They, in the last several years, they've been grooming people to take their place and, you know, hopefully, they're going to fill their shoes the best way we can, but, you know, they leave a special mark in Putnam County and I can't thank you enough for the time you spend here. By the way, this special day, we have Taylor Douglas in the back, former sheriff, and he's a good friend of Deborah's, but I personally invited Taylor to be here today and make sure that he celebrated this time, so. Do y'all have anybody you want to recognize that is visiting, David?
Can I show you something? Jerome, if you will, kind of stand to the side. You see these little jars full of candy? Well, Ms. Langston used to keep them. She had a mug full of Hershey's Kisses and she kept them on her desk, and I was a principal and I had brought her on to be a crisis intervention teacher, and she was learning to be an administrator. She had the heart, she had the brains, she had the knowledge, she had everything. She was what you call a AAA prospect. And I went into her office one day and I was sitting there talking to her and I just undid the lid on her thing and I just poured them all out on her desk, and she very quietly just put them all back up and kept on talking, and she'd got them all back in and put the top on, and I did it one more time, and when I did that, she said, she said, she said, "Oh, no, you didn't." And she gathered up a big handful and stood up and hit me just as hard as you could, right? And I learned right then, you don't mess with Ms. Langston. But Deborah went to kindergarten and all through school, high school with me and Jerome, I've watched him places, he was a kid, so.
None of y'all would have a paycheck if it wasn't for me.
I know.
I've got several things I would like to say. First of all, I'll start with Jerome. I adore him and his wife, Dora. Jerome and I were colleagues at Placa High School together, and then he was my boss there as an assistant principal. And I know that all he wants to do now that he's retired is fish, but if necessary, Jerome, you could be a stand-up comedian because he has the funniest stories I have ever heard in my life, especially when he was in an AP in the elementary schools and his interrogation tactics that he would use with our students to get them to confess. He could write a book, he could make a movie, it's hilarious. Jerome, I wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. You deserve a wonderful life.
And pick me up on the dock.
I never had the privilege of working for Evelyn Langston, but I know her reputation and I know how wonderful she is, and she has always been so sweet to me, and I've just always heard the most wonderful things about you being a boss, and I hope you have a wonderful retirement. Deborah Shepherd- Deborah's mother was very, very dear to me, and she also worked in the dean's office when I was in high school, so I guess that's why, you must have followed in her footsteps. But her mother and my mother played bridge together until they both are no longer with us, but just-
Black Max.
Wonderful times, but Deborah, she may not know this, but she was like one of my idols when I was in high school. I was a couple of years behind her and she taught me how to be a bravette and all those wonderful things when you're in high school. But when I was going to retire, I was very nervous about it, and she dragged me through it kicking and screaming, and everything turned out perfectly. I mean, there was never a hitch in anything, and when I have to do it again, I don't-
Call it.
I guess I'm going to have to call you. I hope you have a wonderful retirement and teach me how to cook and sew and do all those pretty things you do.
Turkey hunt.
I love you.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else, anyone else want to add anything? I think Deborah helped raise Charlie, right?
Yeah.
That is true. Please don't share any of those stories.
Hey, I've heard, I've heard some really good, I promise.
Especially one about a dress.
Madam Chair, you want to join me down here and let's present these certificates to?
No stories on Charlie.
She bound to be kind to half of them.
We were telling stories earlier, Charlie. Don't step in this area or something. Jerome, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Jerome.
Little girl on floor home to a-
Thank goodness Dora's a retired teacher so he can keep you straight.
Well, let's take a picture. This is good times.
I've sure got something I'd like to tell on Jerome and-
Some of them don't need to be told.
I can't, I can't tell them. They're funny though.
One, two, three.
Tammy's taking one.
Let me just say, I man, I just want to miss Deborah. She is one of a kind.
Everybody has my phone number.
After lengthy presentations, but they're all worth it.
Worth it, yes sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Again, all three of them are products of Putnam County, and that's why we are trying to encourage our young people that when they leave to get their education, bring it back home and share with the citizens of Putnam County. I fail to call for any public comments. If there's anyone that would like to address the board by way of public, we have no cards, so we will move now into our consent agenda, noting that item D4 has been pulled, item
Madam Chair-
With that being said-
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus item-
We were going to see if anybody else had something to pull. We'll start with Mrs. Crawford. Yeah, and I just have some brief questions about G17, I1- Wait a minute, G17, I1? I1 and J4. Bingo. Okay. Easy question. Okay, all right, Mr. McInnis. Okay, I don't have any. Mr. Buckles.
I've been through it and I'm good.
Okay, Mrs. Pickens.
I don't have any.
Okay. Now we're ready.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus items G17, G16, I1, and J4.
And D4.
And D4.
Okay.
Oh, I missed that one.
I second it.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mrs. Jane Crawford that we accept the consent agenda minus items D4, G17, I1, J4, and G16, and it was seconded by Mr. Bud McInnis. All in favor, let it be known by the word "I." "I." Opposes, same sign. Motion carries five, zero. Okay, we'll, item D4 has been taken for consideration, so we'll start with Mrs. Crawford with G17, I1, and J4.
Okay.
Okay, G.
Laura, I just wanted you to explain to us what this actually means, because of course we support it, but is, is there something else that-
I'm sorry, you pulled two, is this the Cambridge application letter?
Kelly Smith.
We just need to have the board formally support the fact that we are going towards asking them to consider Kelly Smith Elementary School as a Cambridge site. It's just a formal, it's a formality for us to then ask for them to come and review the site itself.
Okay, so that hasn't already been taken care of and-
To be honest, we tried to, it costs the same whether we're starting this year and not trying to actually start the program till next year, so we have tried to put it off towards the end so that the cost is not over a two-year period, the cost is just for one. It's a money-saving issue, it's a money-saving issue.
Okay, well, that's because I was a little concerned because I know we already have Kathy there as the Cambridge director.
We've done all of the things, we expect there to be no problem since we've done the other sites before and we know what to expect and what to turn in. It's just we like to wait towards the end so that we are not billed across two years, but only for one.
Yeah, and there has been a little dialogue in the community about a new Cambridge site, but I don't, a little dialogue, and I think majority of it's positive. We may have a few kids go to that site as a convenience, but I don't, I see it being more positive than negative, so it's very nice.
But we'll know the cost later when we find out.
It's $10,000 a year.
Oh, okay, that's not bad.
But there was no reason to pay for it this year.
If we didn't need to.
Correct. You got it.
All right, well, then I make a motion that we approve item G17.
A second.
And properly moved by Mrs. Jane Crawford that we accept item G17 and seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by "I." "I." Opposes none. Motion carries five, zero. Okay, the next item that I just wanted you, I read it all, Tanya, but I didn't really understand it.
Are you covering 16 and 17?
She was doing the ones that she pulled first.
G16 was pulled by someone else.
Okay, someone else did?
Mr. McInnis pulled G16.
If you want to do it, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
If you want to do it, Madam Chair.
Oh, I just listed them in the order they gave them.
So Frontline Education, it used to be called Teacher Teacher, which is just a national recruiting platform, and DOE has partnered with them, so DOE is paying half the cost for any districts who would like to partner with them, and then, so it's really a cost-saving for us, and they do have a national recruitment platform that they used, and just to give you a little bit of information, when we were involved in the Nefec Career Fair a couple of weeks ago, there were prospective teachers there from Arizona, South Carolina, Tennessee, and the way they got word of that was through frontline recruiting.
Okay, so whereas we paid for all of the Teacher Teacher contract, DOE is paying for-
Right, and so it's Teacher Teacher has now switched to frontline education and DOE has went into partnership with them and have agreed to pay for 50%, and then the district will pick up the other for any districts who wants to participate.
Okay, all right, I make a motion that we approve consent agenda item I1, the Frontline Education contract.
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been properly moved that we accept item I1 by Mrs. Jane Crawford and seconded by Mr. David Buckles. All in favor, let it be known by "I." "I." Opposes none. Motion carries five, zero. Okay, and then the last one, addendum to compensation agreement with Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services. Rick, I thought you might be able to, or-
Well, we have a-
I just don't know what the difference is. It was a lot, a lot of print and-
Were you on the consortium?
She's on J4.
That's our risk management that handles-
I know, but I didn't understand what the addendum was. I mean, something has been added and there was so much there, I really couldn't figure out, and you know what, you can get back to me later, it's, I don't have to know right this minute, I mean, I know it's something we have to do, and I'm fine with that, I just wanted to clarify, okay? All right, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve J4.
I will make a second to that, to that, I will second that motion, realizing that this is probably going to be for some additional coverage for some unforeseen circumstance.
Oh, okay, well, I somehow or another didn't get that, but anyway.
Okay.
Okay, it has been motioned by Mrs. Jane Crawford that we accept item J4 from the consent agenda and seconded by Mr. David Buckles. All in favor, let it be known by "I." "I." Opposes none. Motion carries five, zero. Mr. McInnis.
Yeah, I just didn't get with, okay, I didn't get with anyone on that, and I just, I've never heard of Bright Bites and just wanted to know what it was.
Okay, so as part of our graduation initiative, we've been working for a few years on trying to develop a more streamlined platform for looking at early warning indicators, and we've done some collaborating with Nefec, Shane was back there and I was gone, but we've been collaborating with them on a couple of projects. This one came, we've piloted a project down in Middleton Bernie that was kind of supposed to kind of get there and it didn't really get good feedback from the folks down there. So this came across, they've been working in Flagler, this company's been working in Flagler and Manatee, they've actually been partnering with Nefec already with the data sharing aspects of being able to make that a easier process for us as a district. And so there are two components of it. One of them is this early warning predictive analytics piece that allows our principals and district leaders to, they take our student data and run it through a process of looking at how student attendance, how student performance, how student behavior impacts students that graduate and don't graduate from our county. So it's very specialized data for, based on how our students perform and helping us look at, trying to use that early warning data to be more proactive, and that's one part of it. And the other part of it actually is a platform to help us better monitor and track interventions. So when we think about MTSS and think about the different interventions we have in place, that piece is also included. And so we're trying to streamline a number- And so we're trying to streamline a number of different things into one platform down to the teacher level, so.
And it will be used in all of our schools?
It will be used all of our schools, including charter schools will have access to it, so it's the entire county, and it's gonna be funded through Title IV.
Yes.
And the other piece that we're getting is a social-emotional learning piece for students. So students go through and answer different questions about school safety, about supportive environment, about how they're feeling in school, and then that is provided to teachers and school leaders to kind of look for students that may have different issues or feel different ways about school and safety that may not have been communicated. So it just helps us to be proactive on that side as well. So we're excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion, Madam Chairman, that we accept G16.
I second.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Bud McInnes that we accept item G16 from the consent agenda and seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposes none, motion carries five zero. We are now out of our regular session into emergency session, and we have two items that are listed. First item, the 2019-2020 Personnel Allocations, justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the personnel allocations that have been presented to us by the superintendent because they are time-sensitive and because he holds the statutory authority to appoint personnel, although we hold the authority to approve allocations.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. David Buckles that we accept emergency item number one, and it was seconded by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposes none, motion carries five zero. Second item on the emergency agenda, grant contract, the Community Foundation for Northeast Florida. Justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
I'll move that we accept the contract with Community Foundation for Northeast Florida.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Jane Crawford that we accept the grant contract and seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposes none, motion carries five zero. We're now out of emergency session. Oh, that was loud, I'm sorry.
You're doing great, that's wonderful.
Okay, we have no unfinished business, no new business. At this time, we will prepare ourselves to hear the reports from our board members, we will start with you, Mrs. Holly Pickens.
Okay, first I'd just like to say, you know, only seven more days. Hang in there, teachers and students, and make sure that you continue to follow the rules so you don't jeopardize anything. I know how it is those last little bit with the full moon going, and so, you know, you're definitely in our thoughts and prayers. I'd also like to thank the parents of all of our students for all the time that they've committed to their children. It's a really neat time of the year when you get to see awards. The Top Scholars was amazing. The resumes of those young people were very, very impressive, and it was just a really good night to be a Putnam County employee. It was just wonderful. Before that, I got to go to Middleton Bernie to watch the Terrific Kids, which is such a pleasure, and I ran into several students who have children there that received the award and some that I hadn't had contact with in quite a, you know, since they graduated, 2010. And she was very proud of her son, and it was great to talk to her. And the, you know, we had the top fifth graders. I'm glad that we, you know, we showcased them and give them a chance to shine, and, you know, it was a great day seeing all those weightlifters and the track runners and, just really impressive. It's, we just gotta hang in there till the end of this school year, so it's great. I'm actually looking forward to the graduation ceremonies, and I'm gonna miss the QI Roberts graduation because I have a former student who was not a student that was into traditional education at all. And he bonded with me because a lot of time he got sent out, timed out, and it ended up in the gym because he could handle himself in the gym. And he's gonna graduate in Tennessee Friday night, and I told him in October that if he would walk across that stage, that I'd be there. And so, I'm gonna go, so.
Thank you, Holly. Well, Mrs. Pickens, yes, okay. Hey, Mr. Buckles?
Well, thank you. A couple of things that I'm really, I think I need to bring to your attention. There's been a post going around on Facebook about schools providing unused lunch food to, as free lunches for children to take home. I talked to Nikki Hawthorne briefly, and I posted online that I thought it was a violation of federal law, and we cannot do that, that is not something that you could do. The liability of trying to prepare lunches or leftover food and sending them home with children would be catastrophic for school districts because someone would have food poisoning or something could go wrong, and that's just not, it's not something we can do. And I wanted to, I told Nikki about that, and she was going to, you know, go get up her Ps and Qs in case the superintendent gets called or asking a civic quorum about something like that. I would like to congratulate, a big shout out to the superintendent and his staff on the mental health employees that we approved in today's packet. I just can't say enough about what I've seen in, you know, over the years, and you have too, particularly on the expulsion committee, children who have particularly unique issues that create problems and they need all the help and support they can get. And I was just really pleased to see the addition of what you've done. It's outstanding. I'd like to also mention, I talked to Mr. Chastain prior to the meeting, and we need to get, just to double-check this, Mr. Superintendent, he was telling me that we still owned 10 acres adjacent to the YMCA in Crescent City, and I told him that years ago that I had arranged a trade or either sold it to Greg Gotier, but I believe we swapped it for property that's adjacent to Crescent City High across the diagonal road there. And don't you kind of remember? And so, he was lamenting over, we were talking about facilities and things. That was, that was meant to be an affluent spray field for the water at Crescent City High, but at that time, we chose to put city water and sewage down 309 and down Huntington Road to the high school so the community could tie in. But, be that as it may, to help him get straight, maybe Sharon could follow up and just let his secretary know to.
And we'll check on that, and I think I invited you to come to a meeting Thursday.
I will be with you.
Okay, and we'll have, try to have some information for you.
He said he would be there as well, so we'll do that.
Make sure.
Graduation's always a particularly wonderful time and a, as a lifelong educator, a scary time. I'm so proud and happy for all of the kids, but I'm always so worried. They've got their mind on a thousand other things, and they don't realize that they've achieved this part of their life, and it's serious business from here on, and they get out and they're almost like unconscious, having a good time for the summer, and I just pray, and I know the board does, that we don't have any serious accidents over the course of graduation ceremonies. And we, I sat with the expulsion committee this morning, and we heard some cases, and we had an attorney incorrectly say that the board had years ago expelled a bunch of kids for two years out of school, which is Florida law allows up to two years. And I corrected him, and it happened to be a city official that was doing that, and I told him, it's essentially like his chief of police parking a police car in a speeding zone with no one in it. It's a way of getting the attention so we can sort it out. We're like a check and balance as they come before us. It's not, there's not ren-, you know, just hand over fist throwing kids out of school, that's ridiculous. But I just, as we continue on in our discipline process, I think the information that you now, the access you have with Ms. Cahann and some of the videos that you're able to produce, perhaps we could do some that would educate folks, and I look forward to that. And other than that, I just look forward to getting through this busy schedule. I've had some grandchildren get some awards, and I'm just really excited. It's been really, really unique. And I'm going to Interlock and Bacolarium tonight, so we gotta get out of here in a little bit.
It's not to say.
I know, I saw in your eyes, you thinking you're gonna slow him down.
You don't have to speed, thank you, Mr. Buckles. Alright, Mr. McInnes?
Yes, ma'am. I echo what Mr. Buckles said about the safety, because we have all these children, I don't know how many groups we have out of the state right now, but everybody's, just needs to be safe. I had the pleasure of attending the 54th Drug Court graduation. There was a former student there that was there to watch and support him. Got a great night of entertainment with IHS Performing Arts Spring Concert. They had an amazing nine-someble event, it was just incredible. And if you don't, if you have a chance, you always need to, especially hear the IHS Jazz Band, they're one of the tops. Did attend a Top Scholar, and I wanna congratulate Justin Darcy. Job well done with the Robert W. Webb Award of Excellence. And I did attend the Bacolarium, all these were first for me. I'm just, first time for pretty much everything, and I've never been to, I don't think I even went to my own Palacka High School Bacolarium. I went to my church Bacolarium, but.
I bet you did.
No, I think I had to come pull you out of a ditch somewhere.
Okay.
Anyway, did have the pleasure of attending the CIS Foster Grandparent Program, their year-end program, and it was always good to see all the grandmas that were there, I don't think there's any grandpas anymore. Lisa Velukovich does an excellent job and all the schools. Had the pleasure of attending the All-County Baseball Awards last night, and that was very entertaining, congratulations to the winners. And do want to say I have been out at Aquila and QI, and the buzzer system does work, it's a very good system. At QI, the lady has it where you just pull the door, you can, right when you're there, the door opens, so. Don't want to forget, Thursday night, there's a spring game. IHS is playing Lafayette at 7 o'clock, at $7. Want you to be there. And there is the Bacolarium service tonight at Interlock and First Baptist Church at 7. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McInnes. Mrs. Crawford?
I had the opportunity to work on the Feed the Need Garage Sale, and I just wanted to report, Denise mentioned it in Kiwanis today, that over $7,000 was made for our backpack program. That's gonna feed a lot of kids throughout next year, so. I know Renee is on their Board of Directors, and Denise Bramlett is a workhorse, let me tell you something, and it was a great event. I had the opportunity to attend the PHS FFA banquet, which is, it was, it's always a great time, but these students in this organization have accomplished so much this year and have won so many awards, there are too many to mention. But I would like to thank the PHS FFA advisor Alexis Tilton. She has worked very hard to build this chapter back to its glory days that it once knew, and she's worked really hard, and the kids seem to love her, and she spends a lot of time. And once again, Renee, I was a sucker for the dessert auction. You know, I'm broke.
Oh, you would buy cake quicker than anybody I've ever seen.
I know, I wanted to mention also the County Top Scholars Program. It highlighted the accomplishments of our top students, and there was a lot of them, there were a lot of them, but they're all just amazing in the things they've done. The number of community service hours, I wish I had added it up as they talked about it, because these kids, they're just amazing. And Bud mentioned Justin Darcy. I told his dad, I said, you know the reason your son's so smart? He won the top award. I said, is because you had me for English. And he said he knew that was the reason too. But it was great seeing him. I had to miss the All-County baseball, was it baseball and softball?
Softball and baseball, both, yes.
Because I was invited to the Jenkins Middle School Top Eighth Grade Awards. David, you missed your granddaughter getting an award.
My daughter didn't tell me she was getting an award.
Well, she was adorable, but those kids were just precious. And I'm gonna tell you what, if all these kids go to Palacka High School, we're gonna have a remarkable freshman class because that is a really dynamic group of kids. And I would like to give a shout out to Diana Drew, her first year at Jenkins as principal. She and her staff did an amazing job getting this all coordinated, and it was catered by Cracker Barrel, which was even better. It was wonderful. One of their teachers works there, so they had an in. Thursday night, I'll be back at my stomping grounds at Palacka High School Awards Night at what o'clock? Do we know, 6?
6:30, 7:00.
Okay, I think 6. I know the underclass, are they doing them first?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna pack lunch for that one. It's a long night, but it's all, you know, that's where they get all their scholarship awards and medals of honor and those sorts of things. Looking forward to two graduations this week. We have E. H. Miller Friday morning. I've been asked to give the commencement address. I have practiced, I have not gotten through it yet without.
Wait a minute, where, where are you giving this?
At E. H. Miller.
E. H. Miller's graduation.
Oh my goodness, I'd bring some towels.
Well, I'm still working on it, but I'll get there, I promise. And of course, QI Roberts is on Friday night. Seven days, everybody, seven days, we can do it. Just be safe out there.
Thank you, Mrs. Crawford.
Sandy, can I just say one more little sentence? And I know we're kind of pushed for time here.
Go ahead.
As we go into executive session, I just want to say that this board has worked extremely hard to survive the superintendent's and the Finance Department's recommendations and to work with them on the cuts and the holdbacks and the things that they've had to do. And I think that as we go into the next few years, I think it's gonna be understood that if we do anything, that we're gonna, we're always trying to figure out how to do more. And I had a long talk with the superintendent that, I know where his heart is, but you know, it's a matter of how, what can we do and how can we do it? And I'm really proud that the superintendent has toed the line. I mean, even when the board has chastised him over the last few years, he's done, he's done a good job of trying to get us in a posture where you might can do things that haven't been done in a decade. So anyway, with that, I'll pass it on.
Alright, thank you again, Mr. Buckles. Just want to commend Mr. Travis Weaver and his committee with the Emergency Operations Plan. To read it and see the, every phase of our school district was considered. The buses, what to do if an armed person got on and took over the bus, what to do in the classroom if you're outside and gotta get inside. Every detail was thought out and put into this plan, and we just want to give them a thumbs up because it is true. When you fail to plan, then plan to fail. And so I think we're in good hands there. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Weaver, he's giving himself a hand back there.
Well, I echo in that, GP's doing a.
Yes, a spiel, a mock spiel, yes, I read that.
That's kind of what we've done over the years.
Okay, I did get to see the newsies and thumbs up to Mr. P. and that group, because all of you were talking about it, and I had to go see for myself, and the proof was in the pudding. And we have some fine actors and actresses and upcoming stars. The Central Putnam Ministerial Association did sponsor the Bacolarium service. It wasn't just for Palacka High, it was, they were, flyers were delivered on the west end and the south end inviting all of the students to come out, and there were two $500 scholarships given out. And all a student had to do was have a letter from his or her pastor, and there was a drawing, and right there. and right there, two students received $500 scholarships. We are trying to find a way to get these students to come and a lot of them just don't realize yet that this may be the last time a lot of them get together, you know, when they go off to school, things happen and we just don't ever know and so, but we're not going to stop trying. We're going to continue to try to make it happen. And we want to thank the superintendent and Ms. Carmaney again for allowing us to have our last meeting here to plan those things and to raise those funds for our students. The All County Softball and Baseball Banquet was phenomenal. Kudos to those students. The top female winner was from Pinal and they, she wasn't there because they were in the Final Fours and I don't know how they've done. Top Scholar, phenomenal, just like Jane said, I mean, it's just, and you think that after you hear one, two, three, maybe four or five of them, that you've heard it all, but every student came up with a unique way or something he or she had done and it's just great. The summer feeding, they're getting ready for that. Churches and schools and sports teams are going to be feeding our children during the summer, making sure, and we just want to encourage our parents to please take advantage of this. We would sit at our church with lunches, just trying to give them away and I guess they thought I had cooked or something they didn't show up to eat. One final thing, if we have any stakeholders that are watching or that are here in the audience, that have jobs for our college, first-year college students, second-year college students that have come back home, Rick's son needs a job and my niece needs a job. If some of you all know of somebody that's hiring, let's do that for our kids. If I had some kind of firm or something, Buckles, you don't have a hookup somewhere?
I got a guy working for me now.
Oh, so we can't get that, but enough said. And just thank you, teachers, for a great year. Mark, just thank you all for a superb year and what the union is doing in order to help us to support and stay in line with what you're doing. To your team, your management team, an awesome job, our hats are off to you. Thank you for helping make our district what it is. And the reason I said that, because this man has something to tell you. I heard it on the news myself. He told me about it, but I heard it on Channel 4 and if Channel 4 said it, it's gospel. All right, Mr. Attorney?
I just want to follow up on what Board Member Buckle said earlier about the share tables. Board Member McInnis asked me some time ago to research and Lex Taylor and I have been doing some research. So far, what we have found is that the USDA does have a program for share tables and it is recommended in certain circumstances to help with avoiding waste and if it's done under the proper supervision.
Correct.
And the appropriate types of food. So, as an example, bananas, apples are okay, but if it's something that's already been opened, you would not want to do that. Or certain items that have to be stored under certain temperatures or items that have already been cooked and were hot food and now are not hot food, those would not be recommended to be used. The federal government through USDA has a program in place and it's encouraged, but we just want to make sure that the state laws are aligned with. The, there is precedent in Florida, in Orlando, it's a Loma Elementary School in Orlando who does implement a share table program, but that program is more for the churches. So, when there is food left over in the schools, then there's a nonprofit group, a church, who accepts the appropriate food.
And they get that.
And they deliver it. And so, we're still trying to make sure that everything is okay with the Department of Education here in the state, but I know that is something that was on Mr. McInnis's mind and we want to do whatever we can to help find that, those answers. We're in the process, right now, we're pretty confident in what is happening on the federal level, but like I said, we'll get more information to you once we find out.
There used to be, I mean, we used to have farmers come and gather swill. That would be the leftover food to feed their livestock.
Mr. Manton.
And then, they did it for years, but then the federal government stopped that. And if you can't haul, if you can't haul leftover food to hogs, you're going to have a hard time without the proper supervision taking it to kids in the community, so I just.
There must be a way though, because those schools are doing it.
Well, it takes more money, more personnel. Somebody's got to do it and it's, and who's going to supervise it? It can be done like Mr. Douglas said, but it's, there's going to be some very, the liability to the district would be.
At least we're looking.
Because if a child gets sick.
And there's also a consideration with the reimbursements that are required if the school had received funds for certain food and how that's to take care of on the backend.
Yeah, I thought about that.
So, there are a lot of moving parts to it.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. All right. Mr. Superintendent?
Let me go back to you and what are you talking about on Channel 4, Madam Chair?
You saw it in the record, St. Augustine Record.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I heard it on Channel 4 last night.
Right. Yeah, thank you for.
So, you want to start with that then?
I do have a copy of that.
Okay, all right.
Let me go back to a question about community service hours. Felicia's always working behind the scenes, so she pulled it up for me. All four high schools this year had 26,929 community service hours. Right at 27,000.
6,000 what?
26,929.
Wow. Look what it does for their resumes to college. I mean, it's just incredible.
Thanks, Felicia, for pulling that up. Let me just go in order of my comments. I'm going to go fast, but I do have a lot of things to brag about, so I love to brag. First of all, want to brag about our board attorney here. He's a member of the young, the Palaca Young Professionals.
Yes.
And they are putting on the Blue Crab Festival.
Yeah.
And what a feat to take this on starting in February. And of course, they were on the radio talking about it today, but what I'm most proud of, today's paper had a picture of some of the Palaca Young Professionals. Actually, Matt Buckles is in there. But they're putting that on because they want to get back to the community and most of those young people are former Putnam County graduates. So, how neat is that, they're coming back to.
Right, to give back.
Having them take over is a lot, it's a lot better than the days when I had to drag down there and look for a band.
I think Katie said on the radio, if I'm not mistaken, they're expecting, what, almost 100,000 people? Some crazy amount.
70 to 100 for sure.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just, and going along with that, talking about the article in the St. Augustine Record, and that was the one you're talking about on Channel 4.
On Channel 4.
There is talking about the western frontier from St. John's County. They're talking about Putnam County. People are moving to Putnam County now, especially from St. John's Duval Counties because of the, you know, the price of the property is getting so congested over there. So, we have a real opportunity here for people to move here and go to school here, you know, and that type of thing. So, stay tuned to that, it should be very interesting. Went down to Crescent City this morning and the Crescent City Rotary presented the Putnam County School District with a check for $10,000 for replacing the floor at Crescent City High School's gym.
Wow.
And that was done actually last year, I believe, but they actually have raised money and presented us with a check.
Hey, I quit hearing this chomping noise over here out of my left ear. Oh, that was, oh, that was Ms. Pickens that used to stay.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you, Holly.
Just an example of how our partners are really supporting our district, so.
Absolutely.
Our "We Are Putnam" video, if you'll go to our Facebook page, we have an updated version of that and Felicia actually went on and Felicia and the media department actually have, the first few scenes have done a little more, you know, kind of Chamber of Commerce looking.
Oh, it's changed?
Yes, changed a little bit, just a lot more water scenes and that type of thing. I showed this at the chamber the other day and they loved it. So, I encouraged them, as I encourage you, to encourage people to see this video, three-minute video.
It's great.
I showed it at the NEFA Board of Directors earlier or last week and had a superintendent from there call me and said, "Hey, can I get a copy of that? I want to show it to our people."
Oh, good.
Charge them.
So, it's good. I mean, I think it's just really good for Putnam County. Graduations. Of course, we have two schools, Crescent City High and Interlochen High, during their graduation ceremonies are going to honor the Class of 69, which would be the 50th anniversary of their first graduating classes from each school.
That's awesome.
So, they're going to have some people on the field and all and that should be really a special time. We're also going to recognize our winners of the Product of Putnam, who we will be actually recognizing in our board meeting on June 18th at our ninth board meeting, but we have actually invited them to attend the graduation ceremonies from the school in which they graduated. So, I think we have two, two in Crescent City, one Interlochen and four at Palaca High School. So, we're going to have them actually come up. When I'm talking, I'll come up and read a little bit about them and what year they graduated. But we have some old timers in there now, going back to the 60s and the 70s, so, very cool. But I'll wait and spring those names on you at the graduation.
And you're referring to the 70s as old timers?
Hey, I graduated then too.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
That hits you as well.
Talking about myself too.
I know.
It's a good time period.
Do they all know yet?
Yeah.
Ms. Crawfish is in that somewhere.
Nobody knows.
Actually, Felicia called them in the last day or two and a lot of crying, a lot of happiness and very touched by that, so I think you're going to really enjoy that, especially when we bring them here and read a little bit more about them.
Be wonderful.
Our, I'm sending you a text about an invitation for tomorrow. I got this sent to me today from Bev Slough, St. John's County School Board Member. She invited each of you to attend a press conference tomorrow at 9:30 and I'll send you the information. It's going to be here in Palaca from United Way and Mr. Bowlen's actually going to stand there for me because I have a prior conflict.
Where is it?
And where?
It's, I've got the address, I'll send it to you.
Rick, while we're in a public meeting, I've read or saw in some paper or on TV where they had canceled their vocational charter in St. John's County. I just need you to look into that and see if that was the first coach technical group or another group and what that means to us here in Putnam County due to our relationship with St. John's River State College.
Yeah.
Okay?
We'll research that and Laura and Renee, can y'all check on that for me?
Okay.
Okay? And besides that, we're looking forward to seeing as many of you as possible tonight. If not tonight, we'll see you at graduations throughout the week. It's going to be a good time.
You do.
That's all I have.
Okay, if there's nothing else to come before us, this part of the meeting.